Fish, Mayor Salzman.
Mayor.
Novick, Fritz, Hales.
Commissioners Novick and Fritz are in Salem or Washington DC respectively on city business. Welcome everyone else and would you please read the first item?
Item 428, Accept 2015 Arts Oversight Committee Report on the Arts Education and Access Fund.
Commissioner Fish.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to begin by welcoming our honored guests from the city's Arts Oversight Committee, AOC Chair Stan Pankin, Jim Cox, Jesse Freed, and Metrics Subcommittee Chair Craig Gibbons. The AOC has been hard at work the last several months putting together their second annual report analyzing how the Arts Education and Access Fund dollars were spent in the prior year. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Stan for his presentation.
Good afternoon Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Stan Pankin, Chair of the Arts Oversight Committee as it's commonly known. We are pleased to report on our, the second year of the Arts Education and Access Fund, and Access Fund, our second year of the Arts Education Access Fund Report. Ah ha, okay, thank you. I must say, I am a little nervous because my wife and one of my daughters showed up here unexpectedly and they are my biggest critics, so it makes it very tough. So before we get on to the actual nitty-gritty of the report, we would like to share with you a video that speaks to a large portion of what this fund is about. And then we will have another little surprise with some special honored guests. So, Monsieur, roll it.
How do I make it go? Stan, I'm at a little bit of a loss here. How do I make it?
Carlo will probably have to help you. Takes a village to run our PA system.
Need Jenny.
I think we need to go back one slide.
You're trying to get the video?
Video, the video.
There it goes.
Hey.
So sometimes it might include some trees, that's right. What else can we tell about a landscape?
Have kids be around art is just so much more reflective of life in general because you know, without, without art, without music, without the visual arts, it's just, it just feels empty. But they come here because you know, there's something they can do that, that makes them feel good. It's a reason to be excited to go to school.
What I love about Ray Lurie is it is a super diverse school in a lot of ways. So our students come from all kinds of backgrounds. I think there are nine or 10 languages in our school.
Caitlin has been great because she's incorporating their work into the school curriculum and so they get, they get a connection that art can really be part of everything.
I definitely have students who at the beginning of the year, I never would have expected to have me run up to me in the bus line and say, "We have art tomorrow. I can't wait to get to school first thing in the morning. I'm gonna be on time."
It's very special because most schools don't have art and it just shows you how to express how you feel about things and to show things that you've barely seen before and just put it on paper and see how you see it in your head.
It feels like, it makes me happy that I can actually do something that I've never tried before.
I teach dance.
Step, step.
I never thought, and I've taught dance for 10 years and I've never, I never imagined that this would be something that I would be able to teach in the public school system. Like that type of career didn't even seem like an option to me. Yeah, well, dance in terms of its relation to like the, the more basic and traditional curriculum in school, you know, dance is physics, you know, dance is science. It's, it's all about how the body moves. Oh, I'm like infinitely grateful, I'm infinitely grateful for the Oregon Arts Tax and for getting the opportunity to really, you know, practice my art form and my, and implement my passion for teaching in the public school system.
I think that is just incredible and I brag on that all the time, that the people came together. I mean, it's no doubt Portland as a city values art.
I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all of our voters in Portland who are helping us build the arts back into Portland Public Schools. You can see what a difference it is making for our kids. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So with that, we have some very special guests here today and I would like to call them up to introduce themselves and present a little, little surprise. So come on up folks.
On that note, we have some actual students who have benefited from the Arts Tax. Do you want to go, do you want to start here, come over?
By the way, this is Nancy Helmsworth who is an arts educator and also a member of the AOC.
Yeah, that's better.
And you can say, in each one, let's say your name, your school, and you can hand your gift to the closest person.
And then we'll line them up all here.
Okay, cool. So.
Thank you.
Put this right here.
Perfect.
I'm Delve, I go to the academy and I go to a lot of people after.
Thank you.
My name is Tobias. I drop the intro. It's in the, near, in the school.
My great tie you're wearing. Olympic tie.
Hi, my name is Esha. My name is Lily. And we go to Maciulip and they give you our tax.
Hey, thank you both very much. Thank you for joining us.
My name is Edward.
My name is Carrie.
My name is Edward.
My name is Jason.
This was made by the pictures of the tree.
It is $8,000.
Wow, thank you for supporting us.
This was a part of the surprise I did not at all know.
Did you tell them who did that?
Beautiful, thank you.
Let's have all the kids come up here. Boy, did Steve and Amanda choose the wrong section.
You did, you're out tied. Maybe they get short in front, taller in the back maybe so we can get it.
Why don't you come over here?
You should hold your art. Yeah, hold your art. You can even take the ribbons off, I would say. No? Don't take the ribbons off Tracy. That's not your job. Okay.
Oh, we'll get it, hold on a sec. See, he already like cherry picked your piece of art. And by the way, are these the parents or special friends or loving, caring adults in your lives? Let's give them a round of applause.
Andrew. Yes, Andrew.
And teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think with that, maybe that would, that would be the end of our report. I think it speaks for itself unless you insist that we give the report. Okay, I guess we are. Before we get into the nitty-gritty, I'm happy to say that last year, it took us approximately 18 drafts to put the report together and we were editing it up until literally the last moment. This year, we were able to do it in seven drafts. Sorry to say that the report is just as long, if not maybe even longer, but at least we became more efficient in this second year. I just want to apologize in advance for reading from my notes because I had an emergency call from the White House this morning and the White House asked for our teller prompter in anticipation of the President's visit here upcoming. So we're gonna move on.
Loan it to him.
So by now, you're all familiar with the history of this fund, but just to provide a little context, the AEAF was adopted in 2012 and provided for the creation of the Arts Education and Access Fund Citizen Oversight Committee, as we commonly now call the AOC. We were charged with reviewing the expenditures, progress, and outcomes of the fund and reporting their findings to City Council on an annual basis. A group of 20 diverse citizens came together to fulfill its task of overseeing the integrity of the system and ensuring that taxpayer money was being collected, distributed, and utilized as intended by the voters. To that end, the committee set out to establish guidelines by which it would perform its task and to develop a set of metrics by which it would evaluate the distribution and implementation of the tax funds to the schools and to the Regional Arts and Culture Council as well as evaluating the data and documentation provided by the Revenue Bureau. We established a set of uniform metrics, which you will see in Appendix B, and I think we'll have it up on a slide later, by which school data would be requested and submitted to the committee for review and evaluation.
Like I said, it takes a village to run this PA system.
During this past year, the metrics format has been minimally improved based upon experience in year one. In the coming year, the Metrics Committee is considering the addition of a data request for the actual hours of arts instruction in order to better gauge the educational impacts of arts tax funding on our children. A little bit about the committee. The committee started out with a maximum of 20 members in an effort to represent as broad a spectrum of the community as possible. During the course of its first two years, the committee lost a number of members for a variety of reasons. We more recently brought on three new members. The AOC and the city will continue to its outreach for new members as it deems necessary to maintain a representative and diverse group. The AOC, now numbering 17, is pleased to welcome its newest members, Shroel Brockman, who I think is sitting right back there, Nancy Helmsworth, who is also here, and Jesse Freed, who is up here reporting with us today. Just a little bit about our meetings and venues. In 2013, our first year, we held a total of 15 full committee and subcommittee meetings. In 2014, there were four full committee meetings and three metrics committee meetings. A full committee meeting was also held in February of this year as well as two metrics meetings, actually three metrics meetings prior to this report. With the uncertainty of the early period behind us, the committee scheduled only two meetings for this coming year. One in February, which we just had, and another one in October. The AOC feels that it's important to move its meetings around the city and into different communities. Meetings have been held at the Park Road School District, the Centennial School District, RAC offices, Revenue Division offices, and at City Hall. The AOC will continue to seek venues that bring its meetings to diverse areas of the city. So a few acknowledgements. From day one, it has been the goal of the AOC to establish a mutually respectful and collaborative relationship with all those involved in the many aspects of the arts fund. The AOC wishes to acknowledge the help, guidance, and administrative support provided by the Revenue Division led by Thomas Lanham and his dedicated staff Terry Williams and Megan Fertow. Tom and Terry are right there. We have been most fortunate to have the continuing coordination and liaison efforts of Jenny Coles from Commissioner Fish's office and Josh Alpert from Mayor's office, for which we are most grateful. We are also thankful to Mayor Hales and Commissioner Fish for their support of our efforts. RAC has been an integral partner in our work and we wish to thank Eloise Damros, Jeff Hawthorne, and Mona Stalkup, who between them have attended all our meetings and offered valuable input and guidance. We further appreciate the cooperation and collaboration of the six school districts that attended many of our meetings and offered valuable input. While the committee developed the data submission format, input for improving it was requested and received from the districts. This helped substantially in developing a workable format that was easy for everyone to use. Now we report on the results and evaluations of the second year of the fund and our recommendations moving forward. So I want to turn it over first to Craig Gibbons, who will report on revenue, followed by, who's that, you do the next one? Followed by Jesse Freed, who will report on the schools, and to Jim Cox, who will report on RAC. So you're on Craig.
It's quite a microphone stand. I have two slides in my presentation and it is all just reflective of numbers and information that we have received from the Revenue Department about revenue collected and dispersed under the arts tax. This first slide shows for the two tax years that have been closed, what the collections have been, the interest earnings, the administrative costs, and then the school and the RAC disbursements. The numbers are pretty consistent and the, one of the important things to understand is that these years are closed for everything except future revenue that will be collected for these years. So all of these numbers will stay the same, but revenue will increase over the years. It looks like we collected less money in tax year 2013 than 2012, but that's also because 2013 is 12 months behind in its collections. Does that make sense? The distribution is on this slide and again, this distribution is closed, these years are closed, and this shows the amount of money in thousands that went to each school And there is some fluctuation here between years and between school districts. I believe that that is based on changing enrollment, but we would have to turn to the Revenue Department for clarity on that. That's what I have to say. Are there any questions?
Questions from anybody on the council? Thank you. Thank you all very much. So we have some more members that are gonna report?
We have the next two parts of that.
Great. So I'll be reporting on the public schools and how the arts funding impacted schools and also how they're doing to meet the expectations put forth in the IGA. The first year for the AOC was really about assessing and evaluating the schools. Year two for us has really been fairly routine. Schools have turned in their data prior to December 31st based on a uniform set of metrics that was set forth in year one by the AOC. You can see in this first slide, a sample of metrics that we request from school districts every year. Some of the metrics we look at are total arts fund dollars, average teacher salary, total full-time equivalent teachers, commonly referred to as FTE, and I will refer to that going forward, school population, as well as how the FTE in each school is broken out within each discipline. I wanted to take a minute here to highlight some feedback we've received throughout the year regarding FTE allocation. In some instances, schools have allocated less than one FTE to a single arts discipline. You can see an example of that here where there's a 1.0 FTE for visual art, but .5 for music.
I don't think your slides are up.
Great.
Sorry about that, I gotta, I gotta get the TV person to put that up. David, could you get the slide up there?
While we're, while we're waiting, I don't, I don't customarily make announcements about the Mayor's proposed budget before I propose it, but next year, if I have my way, you'll have a different sound system. There we go.
Yay.
Okay.
So I was referring to the examples here of 1.0 visual arts teacher and .5 in music and you can see that as an example here. In many cases, this, this kind of situation with FTE reduces teacher contact time with students, as they may have hundreds of students for they only see a group of them once for a 30-minute period each week. While on paper, there is nothing particularly wrong with that, but it does raise the question of how effectively one can educate within a discipline given a very minimal amount of time with students each week. And while it is not in our purview or is it stipulated in the arts tax language, to interfere with how the schools use their resources in this regard, we thought it worthy of discussing, discussion and bringing it forward. We believe access to the arts is crucial and was the purpose of the arts tax, but so is the quality of the education and we believe the distribution of FTE might affect that. One change going forward in the metrics, I'll just say, to help us better understand the FTE issue, is we will be requesting school districts to report on hours of instruction in addition to what you see here. On the next slide, we have a sample evaluation that the Metrics Subcommittee does. After we receive the data from schools, the Metrics Subcommittee takes that data and does a deep level evaluation within each school district and prepares an analysis. You can see here that we're comparing everything to the base year, which was the year prior to the arts tax, to sort of see how far we've come. You can also see that we're looking at data from grade six through 12, even though the funding is for K through 5, we thought it was important to sort of look at long-term effects of the arts tax. The next slide is a sample of the narrative evaluation that the Subcommittee does. We have reviewers' notes and specific recommendations made to the district here. You can find detailed analysis of each of the school districts in your appendix, but we wanted to just give you a sample here. Well, these slides so far have just shown single school districts. One of the most important slides we have here is the summary snapshot of how all school districts did in this past year and it's good news. So as you can see here, in the base year, many school districts had ratios of one arts teacher per 1,500 students in some cases, which is quite high. Year one was much better. We had a few districts not quite meeting the recommended one arts teacher per 500 students, but in year two, we're happy to say that all districts are in compliance and have met at least one arts teacher per 500 students. And many are doing better than that, with the average being one teacher per 387 students, which is great. In fact, there were no schools within any of the districts that did not have at least one arts teacher in their K through 5 students population. Another item of note for the good news is that the art tax has been able to contribute to an increase of 44 overall art teachers. And in this last year, so from year one to year two, there was an increase in nine additional teachers. And while we wouldn't expect it to be as great as that first year, we're happy to see that there still is growth there. The other thing of note here is that all money is being spent on teachers this year and not ancillary purposes, which we discovered in year one, there was some confusion with some of the school districts around what that money could be used for and we want to commend all the schools who have made great strides to fixing that this year.
I'm looking at this, this slide that you have up and we used to say that we had about 70 teachers serving about 30,000 children. According to this, in 1415, we're up to over 80 teachers. Is that correct? Am I reading it correctly?
Total.
Yes.
Total, 80 full-time.
Yes. Yes.
So that's a healthy jump over last year, and is one of the reasons why the ratio is now even better across all six districts.
Yes.
So I have to update our talking point on that, Stan, because I was still using 70. We're now at 83.
Well, get with it, Commissioner.
Embarrass me in front of your wife and daughter, if you don't mind.
So by and large, the AOC is extremely pleased with how the arts money is being used and the improvements we've seen, both in the number of arts teachers increasing and in some of the anecdotal feedback we've received, some of which you heard today. We do have a few recommendations in the area of public schools that I want to just touch on before I pass it on. The first one I mentioned before, and that is that we do think it's worth looking into the FTE issue around distribution of arts teachers. The second one is fairly simple, but the term certified teacher was not defined in the ordinance, and it was raised as an issue specifically among charter schools. They're the ones that it affects the most. They just need some definition around what that term is. And the third is that there are two Portland Charter Schools currently, Ivy and Southwest Schools. They were chartered by the state of Oregon, but they are Portland schools. They serve Portland students, and they are not currently receiving arts tax funding. We, as a committee, do recommend that they receive funding from the arts tax as it was the taxpayers' intent that Portland schools serving Portland students received funding. So we recommend that we change that. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, and I'm Jim Cox, and I'm reporting on the funds to the Regional Arts and Culture Council, also known as RAC. And a little refresher on how the tax money is distributed. So first and foremost, the Revenue Division, by their formula, figures out the total number of dollars to support one teacher for every 500 students for each district, and that money goes first to the schools. All the monies collected after that are distributed to the Regional Arts and Culture Council in order to support three different funding streams. One for general operating support for 45 major arts organizations here in the Portland area, one to do access and equity arts grants for organizations that don't qualify for general operating support, and also for an arts education coordinator. If we could go to, yeah, we've got the slide up. So this was the challenge for us this year. If we look at the very top line on the left-hand side that says 12114, $200,000, at this time last year, that was all that had been distributed to the Regional Arts and Culture Council. And as I remember my report saying, it was really not a very significant sum, particularly because the Regional Arts and Culture Council has a fiscal year of July 1 through June 30, which means that in order to distribute those funds, they have to have a reasonable amount of time to do it to their grant programs. So last year, they only had the opportunity to distribute $200,000. On top of that, no one had an idea of how much more money was going to come in. This was the first time for the tax. The Revenue Division had no idea. It was up in the air. RAC had no idea. So in the collections, if we look down on that through the first set of totals, we're looking at a total of $1,225,000. These were distributions from the very first 2012 arts tax that had since been given to RAC, and these funds are used in their current fiscal year, the 2014-15 fiscal year. And you can see that, again, in the green section, if you look at that, there's a total of that $200,000, just shy of that $200,000, and some of that was put into this current fiscal year. And then if we look down below and we look at the distributions for 213 tax year, we're looking at $880,000. So already, $880,000 has been distributed for the current 2013 tax year, where last year it was only $200,000, and that has been able to be used already in the current fiscal year. So in effect, RAC had nearly a million dollars from the 2012 tax year. They have $880,000 from the 2013 tax year, and still potential more money coming in from both of those tax years, depending on late filers that the Revenue Bureau is able to collect from. So going forward, if we go into the next slide, we're looking at the general operating support. So the majority of the funds go to support general operating support grants. This year, and the news is great, because of the increased distribution, they'll make distributions to 45 major arts organizations. As of March 31, they had made distributions to 16 of those, and they will make the final distributions through June of this year.
And Jim, remind us, but I think I recall the goal is to get the public support for these organizations up to about 5%.
That's exactly correct, Commissioner, yes.
And where are we now, about?
About 3.8. If you look at the aggregate, so it's, you know, for some organizations, it's going to be closer to 2.5; for some, it's going to be over that, but in the aggregate, it's getting to about 3.8, where before it was about 1.7. So it's a significant increase. And if we look at the dollars, too, last year's dollars from the AEAF covered about 11.2% of the total money going to this distribution for the operating support. This year, it's 46%. So it's significantly greater. So it's having, so the arts organizations in general are seeing a greater significance to this and will in time as this tax stream increases.
And Jim, just for the audience watching, the second column is the additional $600,000 the mayor put in his budget-
That is correct.
... of one-time money, so-called bridge funding during the transition. So that's why you add the two columns to get to 1.0, almost 5 million that went in operating support.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's absolutely correct. So we can go to the next slide. So the second stream goes to access grants, and these are going not only to organizations, but also, it doesn't have to be an arts organization, but it can be a community organization that's serving minority communities or neighborhoods that might not normally receive funding for arts activities, whether it's an arts festival, music in their neighborhoods. Last year, this, what we're looking at is the distribution from last year, which was $26,000. These grants, we weren't able to report on this because these grants aren't distributed until May. So last year was $26,000. This year, we're looking at $79,000. The grant applications are already being processed. Again, RAC will distribute these funds in May of this year, so we will report on who receives those funds in next year's presentation. But these are the groups that received funds from last year's. And finally, the last stream, and on this stream, just to put this in perspective, this is at least 5% of the funds that RAC receives through the, in their fiscal year for the tax, goes into this funding stream, and they are well within that limit. And the next one is for an arts education coordinator. Last year, it was $23,000, and it basically helped to do some arts training, but the real goal was to hire a full-time coordinator to make sure that there is a coordinated approach to arts education from kindergarten through grade 12. Also helpful to us, because one of the issues that we are struggling with as a committee right now is how to, how do we assess the value and performance of what's going on in the schools? And so RAC has been able to hire Marna Stahlcup, who again, has been coming to all of our meetings since she was hired. She's going to be helping kind of put together benchmarks, looking at national programs, what's going on in other cities, national benchmarks, that we could look at how Portland is matching up to those with the arts tax, and just kind of see how effective, not only are we reaching one teacher for every 500 in the lower grades, but how effective that is, and also, are we seeing a coordinated effort from grade six through grade 12? So we're thrilled to be able to say that there's $14,000 now that is supporting that position. This is funded out of what's called less than 3% of the gross revenues of the entire tax. So they're using $114,000, the entire tax brought in more than 7 million, so they're way, way below that 3% mark. So they're within the funding source of where they should be. Overall, what we'd like to say is we believe RAC is doing a great job stewarding these funds, getting them out in good grant streams, and we encourage the city, again, to continue funding on the city's side as well as the arts tax, so that we can get closer to meeting that 5% goal.
Great. Well, thank you, team. So let's move on. Before offering our recommendations for this year, let's take a look at last year's key recommendations, and let's see what happened with those. So number one, the city should be at the forefront of providing more positive messaging about the tax and its benefits for children, the arts, and the entire community. We believe that some of this messaging has been provided, and we trust that we can look forward to a continuation of positive communication in the future. Number two, our recommendation last year was that the Revenue Bureau, now Division, by the way, and city leaders should seek ways to better communicate the arts tax requirements to the public, including more outreach to minority population and expanding explanations in additional languages. Although there has been some effort to do so, even under cap constraints, we understand that administrative funds have been capped, but the city may need to explore ways to partner with other agencies to provide this important reassess. So that was our recommendation last year. The result, we are pleased to report, that the Revenue Division has made excellent strides in reaching out to diverse communities. Materials are now published in 10 languages, and they are working with the Office of Equity and Human Rights, the Office of Management and Finance, and Elders in Action to improve outreach. Recommendation number three last year, the Revenue Bureau should continue to work towards expediting its collection process in the future. Incorporating the arts tax into TurboTax and other third-party software and seeking file sharing of the IRS should be implemented as soon as possible. This year, we're happy to say the art tax can be filed using a number of leading tax software products like H&R Block and TurboTax. File sharing with the IRS is still a goal on which the Division is actively working. Number four, city council and the Revenue Bureau should review the 5% cap and determine if it is in fact a realistic figure, especially in light of expected reduced revenue. And we did have a conversation about this last year, especially with you, Commissioner Solzmann, if you recall. This has not been reviewed this year, but remains a consideration for future years after more historic data becomes available. Number five, the Revenue Bureau should provide, I'm sorry-
Go ahead. I'll ask later.
Okay. The Revenue Bureau should provide a three-year projection of revenues and expenses after all the data is in for the first tax year. That was tax year 2012 we were talking about. This was not viable in the early stages, but is something that will be discussed again for future years as data becomes more reliable. The Revenue Division has, however, advised the AOC that revenues are expected to begin stabilizing as the tax matures. An important recommendation last year, the IGA between the city and the school districts should have more specific language about how the fund should be spent and a clearer definition of cost language. Should also be, language should also be included about the citizen oversight committee's role and responsibility. Happy to say the IGA agreements have been renewed, and all of those issues were addressed, and you have the details of that in your full report. I won't go into it here. Number seven, the AOC should be more insistent that all schools submit their data in the same format that was established by the committee and within the timeframe established. We recommend that the renewed IGA address this point, which it did, and I'm happy to say that this year, all the school districts submitted their data on time and in the format we requested, with the exception, a little bit of Portland Public Schools, who their data is so vast that we accept a slight variation to what our format is. So for the most part, our recommendations last year were pretty much fulfilled, and the AOC is very, very happy and grateful for that. So recommendations this year, just a summary, because I think we've discussed most of those in the body of our report. Number one, provide a clear definition of certified arts teachers via an administrative rule procedure. Number two, provide arts tax or other funding for the Southwest and Ivy Charter Schools so that they equally benefit on a proportionate basis with the other school districts. Three, the school districts and RAC, through its education coordinator, should collaborate towards creating a model program that aligns with recognized national standards for quality arts education and which addresses the concern over FTE allocations. We further recommend that this be undertaken over the course of the following year, with a report to be submitted to the Arts Oversight Committee by no later than this time in 2016. Recommendation four, AOC to add request for hours of instruction in each arts discipline in its data submission form. Number five, the Revenue Bureau should provide projections of revenues and expenses at a time when it becomes viable to do so. Number six, the legislative intent of the AEAF was to add new resources on top of the city's current levels of funding. We recognize that the city is on track by continuing its general fund investments in RAC and should continue to do so. Seventh and last, the AOC to work with RAC to create a more comprehensive way to track how different fund dollars are used in any given RAC, tax year dollars are used in any given RAC fiscal year. This will continue to be an ongoing need as the Revenue Division becomes even better equipped to collect taxes from late and non-compliant filers. So moving forward, where do we go from here? Qualitative impacts. As stated in last year's report, while the committee's charge is to oversee and review the expenditures and outcomes of the arts fund, we continue to strongly believe that our task should include a qualitative evaluation as well. What are the ultimate impacts on children? Are children doing better in school? Are children doing better socially? Do we see an effect on graduation rates and student attendance? Do we have qualified and diverse arts teachers, not just more teachers? Has there been an effect on parent involvement in the schools? Have arts institutions been able to open their doors to more underserved communities? Are our multicultural communities more engaged with the arts? These are more difficult questions to answer than simply evaluating numbers, but we believe that these can be answered over time. We are currently moving forward on that path by asking the question about FTE hours as discussed previously. The AOC will continue to dive deeper into the qualitative aspects of our charge in the years to come. We remain, we always remain open to input and suggestions from all sources. Thank you. That is our report, and we'll welcome any questions.
Thank you very much.
Well, I just, you caught my attention when you said that the revenues are projected to decline. I guess I-
Well, that was, that was really, not decline, but the numbers were not as great as anticipated because of the challenges, and that took place in year one.
Right.
Because of-
But I thought you were saying that in your, you were mentioning the administrative cap of 5%, and you were saying there was some question about whether that should be remained because revenues are-
Well, that was, that was a statement made last year. That applied to last year.
Oh, okay.
That was the recommendation last year, but that does not apply to this year. Sorry for that confusion.
And we're, just remind me, Stan, we're supposed to look at that 5% over a five-year rolling average?
It's over a five-year period, average over five years.
And it's no more than 5% of the revenues generated by that tax?
Correct.
It doesn't preclude the council from supplementing the overhead from some other source?
No, it does not.
Mayor?
I have no other questions. It's a great report. Thank you.
Carla, do we have people signed up?
Yes, I have three people signed up.
So before we dismiss the panel, this is really terrific work, and it's a comprehensive report, a very understandable PowerPoint, very clear presentation, and what's really heartening is the progress we're making, and we particularly appreciate seeing the recommendations and the follow-up on the recommendations, because, you know, in government, we have to always make sure that we take recommendations and act on them or react to them, and so it's nice to see that there's been progress on those recommendations, and you have some additional recommendations that are a little more controversial, thinking through the question of the charter schools, looking ahead to the administrative cap, the definition of certified teacher, the definitional piece. But what all of these scream to me is that you're doing your job in a very thorough and thoughtful way, and so thank you, and we'll have more to- And so, thank you, and we'll have more to say when we accept the report.
Well, you want to keep things interesting with some controversy, you know, right?
Before we lose any of the young people that are here, I see that the art has a card. Does each card have the name and contact information for the young person, or do we need to collect that separately? Because I'm guessing that each of us will write a note back, and if for any reason we don't have an address... Jenny, would you wave your hand? Jenny will collect emails or addresses so that we can send the young artist thank-you notes directly.
Great work. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take public testimony on the report.
I have Asia Murty, Millie Jarvis, and Stephen J. Entwistle, senior.
Come on up, please.
All right. Good afternoon again, ladies. Welcome.
My name is Asia Murty.
Hello, my name is Millie. We go to school at Metropolitan Learning Center.
We are here to talk about how the arts tax has impacted us at school.
Having art for two years has been an amazing experience.
It has taught me to use my voice creatively, says Jalen Ellis Turner, a fifth-grade student at MLC.
Liliana McClain is another student at MLC. She said, "Before we started having art, I was scared of art class. I loved to create, but I was scared that I'd be told my style was wrong. I also felt the same way about math, but in my art class, I learned that no art is wrong. Learning to take risks in art helped me to take risks in math, too."
Having the arts tax has not only influenced us at school, but at home as well. Fifth grader Noah Penwell states that "art class has influenced me to make my style of guitar playing more creative and artistic."
For us personally, we have both enjoyed having art and have benefited in many ways.
Having art at MLC has been an incredible experience for me. I have always loved to do art, especially sketching and painting. Having art has helped me improve my skills with both pencil and paintbrush. I have learned styles of painting and collage from all around the world. Since we started art class, I have found myself drawing and painting more in my free time. School has been even more fun and interesting with art, and I often look forward to the days when art is part of our schedule.
Armel has taught me many different ways to express myself through many styles of painting, drawing, sculpting, and more, but this is just visual art. There's dance, music, drama, and each are just a bridge to many other ways to show how you feel, think, explore, speak, and learn. I feel grateful that the art tax has given us an umbrella of art. This is why the art tax is a great thing that has happened to us at MLC and all over Portland.
On behalf of all the elementary students at MLC, we are so happy to have art at school. It makes a difference to our learning and enjoyment of school every day.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today, and we'd like to leave you with a final quote from a fifth grader, Liam Brown, another MLC student. Sometimes to one mind the art piece is a failure, but to another it is a masterpiece.
Hey, well done. Well done. Thank you. Stephen, hard act to follow.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Stephen Entwistle, Portland native, and member of Individuals for Justice and executive director for Healing Man Sanctuary, Oregon's Healing Man Sanctuary. I grew up here in Oregon. I don't know, have you guys went to school here in Oregon as kids? All right, Dan did.
Kids, yes.
I don't know what year it was, but anyway, back when I went, it was like the golden years of electives. It took me a whole week to figure out how many elective classes that... I mean, everything from bachelor skills. I could go down a whole list. I mean, foundry work, small engine repair, auto body, paint, lathe work, woodworking classes, arts classes, intermurals. Remember that word, intermurals? We used to have intermurals after school, and there'd be all sorts of activities going on. And that was funded by the federal government. That was with the golden days. Okay. Nowadays, unfortunately... Remember the show The Lives of the Rich and Famous? Remember that show? Do you ever wonder why that's not on anymore? Anyway, in the eighties, politicians decided that they needed tax breaks, which took arts funding from all of our public schools, along with other proven programs for children and others that worked really well. Okay? And right now, now is the order of the day. My point, fair taxing on the overprivileged would make all of these desperate measures, such as arts tax, street tax, would be unnecessary. So we should take a very hard look at our history of funding schools. We can do a lot better. I love arts. We don't have enough arts, as far as I'm concerned in this. It has nothing to do with liking or disliking arts, but what it has to do with is how all of this is funded and how our schools have taken a real big hit. I volunteered quite a bit in one of my... I have four children who went to public schools, and I volunteered quite a bit. And I saw the class rises, you know, thirty-plus people, and it was just hard just to manage the class, let alone try to teach something. But the teachers were always glad to have me in there because that would always make them laugh and stuff. So, anyway, we need to take a hard look at our overall thing, like, I mean, what's the next tax for whatever we need? We need to get back to the overprivileged and not put the burden of these taxes and this funding on the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else want to speak on this report? Then I think we need to motion to it up.
Mayor, I move to accept the report.
Second. No further discussion. We'll take a roll call vote on that, please.
Fish?
Well, what a wonderful way to start the afternoon, and let's begin by thanking the young people that took time to come out today and to advocate for the arts. You're the reason that 62% of Portland voters agreed to tax themselves so that you would have more robust arts education in the classroom. And because of the generosity of Portland voters, we now have over eighty teachers in six school districts impacting the lives of over 30,000 children and exposing them to the arts. And that's a wonderful thing, and I think we're all up here proud to live in a community that supports arts and arts education and believes that it matters. I want to thank Stan Pankin and all the committee members who joined us today and all the others who are in the audience for the tremendous effort that you give to the city as an oversight body. Yours is not an easy task, and you're still refining your metrics. You're still developing a more comprehensive way of evaluating, and it is hard work, and you do it very well. And this is the second time we have received a report, and we are very grateful for your service. So thank you for the work that you do and for your advocacy. Last month, for those of you who might have gone to see a local show, a dance production or a play or music, you would have gotten a copy of Arts Landia, which is the program that's handed out whenever you go to see the arts. And in it was an unusually critical commentary about the arts tax. And someone was actually quoted as saying that it was a blankety-blank disaster. I respectfully disagree. And so, in this month's Arts Landia, as the Arts Commissioner for the city, I penned an essay called "Arts Education Matters," in which I tell the good news about what this tax is doing and why we should all be proud to live in a city that has an arts tax. And one of the things that I point out is that in just the last few months, we've seen Beaumont Middle School students perform with the Metropolitan Youth Symphony at the Arlene Schnitzer Concert Center. Poetry slam winner Bella Trent came here and read a poem about picking a poem for Arts Landia, which was her award-winning poem. And she took our breath away, this young woman, who is dealing with a significant disability but has found her voice through the arts and poetry. And then later, I had the honor of seeing Roseway Heights Vietnamese immersion program children do a traditional dance at the Newmark Theater. So when someone asks you the question, "Why does arts education matter?", I think the answer is, look at our kids. Look at what they're doing, and look at what this funding is allowing them to do. And the additional dividend, of course, is that the additional resources go to RAC to support operating the operations of distinguished arts organizations and access and equity funding and coordination. So it's a big deal, but in order to maintain public trust over this program, we have to have an oversight body that takes its responsibility very seriously. And to Stan, and to Jim, and Jesse, and Craig, and all the other committee members, a heartfelt thank you for the great work you do, and I commit to doing my part to address the challenges you've placed before us. Bye.
Saltzman?
Oh, by the way, and thank you to Jenny Kales. Jenny, who you mentioned kindly, who works in my office, Josh Alpert in the mayor's office, and of course, our friends at RAC, Thomas Landem and his crack team at Revenue. They're a great team, and we are grateful for all their efforts. Bye.
Saltzman.
Well, thank you to the Oversight Committee. I'm really impressed with the amount of time you're spending on this, and it really shows in terms of the quality of the report you gave us. It's a very elegant, simple reporting form, but I'm sure it's not that easy to have gotten the information to the point where you have succeeded in getting it now. So I really appreciate the hard work you put into it, because we need to maintain the ability to demonstrate this tax really is funding the teaching positions that we intended it to when we asked voters to approve this a few years ago. So great work, and appreciate it, particularly Stan Pankin's leadership. I want to thank the Revenue Bureau for all of its work as well, and for its commitment to customer service and demonstrating such a high personal interest in making sure everybody pays this tax, that I actually got a personal email from the director of the Bureau asking whether I'd paid my tax. So I appreciate that level of commitment, Thomas. I trust every potential taxpayer in the city can count on calls like that in similar situations. I'm probably just because I'm old-fashioned and I mail it, and I didn't play it online. That's why he was wondering.
Commissioner, you did not appreciate it when Thomas showed up at dinnertime with the envelope to follow up. That probably was going a little bit too far.
No, I do appreciate the work. I know it's been a struggle to get the revenues to where we hoped it would be, and it looks like it's getting better. And I certainly, you know, understand some of the issues around the administrative costs versus the stabilization of revenues, and those are things. And then, Mayor, you did foreshadow a little bit about your proposed budget in terms of the acoustical equipment. I hope the proposed budget might have $20,000 in there for Ivy and Southwest Charter Schools to make them whole as well. They seem to have lost out through no fault of their own. So I'm pleased to support this report. Bye.
Hales.
Well, Stan, thank you to you and your committee, Thomas and Terry, and to those at the Revenue Bureau. I appreciate my colleagues remembering the great work that you do, and we all should. Thank you. You know, I think in any governmental enterprise, there are sort of three ways to make sure it's doing its job. One is careful formal analysis in public administration. We have that through our bureau directors, and we have that through the numbers and the statistics that we see, and that's important. And the second is, we have independent citizen oversight, citizens who aren't elected officials, who can bring us bad news if there is bad news, who can speak truth to power and come in and say, "This is working, this isn't. You need to tune this up." And then the third is lived experience, the anecdotal experience that each of us have in anything, whether it's how our police bureau is working, or whether we've got the urban growth boundary right, or whether we're doing right by our kids in the arts. And in all three cases, we've got positive indications here. We've got great numbers that show that this tax is delivering really a significant effect on the community at a modest cost. And while we're talking about numbers, by the way, maybe lived experience, too, every elected official's office gets occasional kudos and frequent complaints about things that aren't working. We've had a trickle of complaints, a handful of complaints about the arts tax in my office this year. And to that extent, that's in effect a backhanded compliment that this is working. Secondly, we do have really effective, independent oversight here, and we thank all of you for doing that volunteer job. It's really important, and obviously, the report we've heard today shows that we're doing well. And then the third piece is lived experience, and Commissioner Fish mentioned some that we've had here, just in this council chamber here recently. I've had the opportunity to have a little bit of that lived experience myself, my kids, two of the three of working in the arts because they had the opportunity as kids here in Portland to have access to that. But the most fun I have in my job is when I get out of this building and I get to interact with kids in our schools. We have no formal responsibility for schools here, other than maybe this one. But every now and then, we get to escape this building and interact with kids. And just in the last few months, I was at Sutton Elementary watching kids read their poetry with the teacher that had helped them achieve that openness and self-understanding, and it was just beautiful to listen to. I was at Parkrose Middle School, listening to their middle school band, and for a while, schools in this city didn't have middle school bands, much less access to music in the elementary schools. And they sounded really great. And then I went to Sunnyside and heard their production of Portland the Musical, which is a historical musical play about our city. And those kids worked so hard with the artist in residence that was there to help them with that production, and it blew us away. It was wonderful. And so, for me, that lived experience is a really powerful verification that these numbers indicate success. This report from our leading citizens who've looked carefully at this work are indications of success, and so is the smile and the joy that we hear in those kids as they participate in the arts. This mechanism is kind of a complicated workaround, but it's working. You know, there was an economist in Oregon named Ed Whitelaw who coined the expression "the second paycheck," and that we get a second paycheck in Portland because we live in a great city. We live in a great city with parks and public schools that work and safe streets and a great transit system, and we actually have to spend less money. That's why he put it that way. We have to spend less money on what people might have to acquire privately in other cities because the common wheel works here. Well, think of it this way: The arts tax is a small deduction from a really big second paycheck. That's a great deal. Thank you all very much. Bye. Take a break. Thank you very much for coming. Here's to it for the arts.[1653.33]
I can follow, but we'll give you the opportunity. Let's read item 429, please.
Accept the State of Housing in Portland 2015 Report.
Commissioner Salzman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that this is Housing Bureau Director Tracy Mannings' farewell performance in front of council today. Tracy has led the Bureau for nearly four years and she is leaving us for new adventures and we certainly wish her well. She's been an exemplary director and she will truly be missed. So thank you, Tracy.
Dan, a question. Does she need council approval to put in this?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we're going to agree to that.
I don't think we can stop her. And now a bit about why we're here today. This is the first annual State of the Housing Report. It's a comprehensive, data-rich source looking at the housing market in Portland and integrating the most recent, and I should say reliable, public and private data that is available. And quite frankly, it paints a pretty stark picture for many of our fellow Portlanders trying to buy or rent in the city of Portland. The average black or Native American family in Portland, simply put, cannot afford to rent a two-bedroom apartment anywhere in our city. Many portions of our city that were once affordable to the average family, Portland family, are no longer affordable. So it's rich in data, but it's also sobering in its message. And I hope that we will all, as a result of this report, rededicate ourselves to increasing the supply of affordable housing and continuing to help those who are most vulnerable to changes in our economic climate. As I said, this report is rich in other data and on Housing Bureau programming, its affordable housing portfolio, expenditures related to affordable housing, and we will be seeking council and community feedback on this report to help make sure that it becomes, as I said, it will become a regular occurrence in October of each year that we will present this report. So we're presenting it to you now in April, but we will be doing a supplement to this and getting it on a regular October cycle. And it will also become more or less the vehicle for which many of the reports that the Portland Housing Bureau is required by one council ordinance or another to submit to council, we will try to get those all incorporated into one comprehensive report such as you have before us now. And so now I'd like to turn it over to Tracy Manning, Matthew Shabold, Policy and Equity Manager, and Martha Calhoun, our Public Information Officer, to present the report.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner, and really want to thank Commissioner Salzman for his vision and leadership in setting us on the path for creating what really is this first-of-its-kind report for the city of Portland. And since it's my last council meeting, I hope you'll indulge me just a second to introduce a couple of my staff people that you may not have met before. So Matthew Shabold is our new Equity and Policy Manager and he really provided the leadership for this report. I have a feeling you're going to be seeing a lot of him. He's outstanding. Please, I hate introducing you to my great staff because I know you will try to steal them for your bureaus, so.
I have that at too in my office.
Yeah, you, no, you get no more. And Martha Calhoun is our Public Information Officer and pretty much anything that's really well-written that you see come out of our Bureau, she probably wrote. And then also Antoinette Pietke, who you have seen because she wrote all three of the Bureau's three successful innovation fund applications. She's the head of our data team and it's something that she and I am really proud of, working with her during my time at the Bureau, to really have a strong grounding for our policy work in data. And so, Antoinette, would you? And then her data team, so now I'm going to make them, will the data team stand up? They're not all here, but you guys are going to have to indulge me this last time. And then the rest, now stay standing. And then the rest of the PHB team? Come on, it's my last day. Second last day, you have to.[1044.83][1044.83][applause] Lisa Counts is being part of our team too. Lisa represents us. So and I also want to note that there are a number of members of our housing community here with us today, who you probably recognize, directors of a lot of the most important housing institutions in our community. So historically, we've measured the city's impact on housing by reporting on what we have done, how many units we've produced, what we've accomplished, what the resources available, who we're serving. But looking back at what has happened has given us only part of the picture. So Commissioner Salzman recognized that this approach was inadequate in our current market environment that's rapidly changing. It did not serve to inform forward-looking policy and programming. So this report is a snapshot of Portland today and it's also then a window into the current environment that a housing seeker faces in terms of housing choice. As a snapshot, its remarkable strength is that it is current market data throughout the city. We were purchasing some private market data and blending it with more historic sources to get a current snapshot. There are some limitations to that because it's a point in time. You'll see a couple of anomalies. Why are there so many studios suddenly available in St. John's? Well, a building had opened the day before, so. Strengths and weaknesses, but overall, just a remarkable set of data we haven't had access to before. So our goal with this report is really to provide the information that the Housing Commissioner and City Council needs to set policy for the city of Portland. And also to understand how your interventions through primarily our Bureau, although also through BPS and others, are impacting that market. It's a look at our city's total housing market by housing type, by geography, and by affordability for different types of Portland households. It also pulls together a variety of housing reports, Commissioner mentioned, that council has historically requested, as well as the outcomes of PHB's programming in our development portfolio. So as you said, this is a Phase One. One of the things that Commissioner Salzman is great about prompting us is to do things quickly, get something because we knew we needed to make some decisions. Going forward, this provides us an opportunity to get your feedback and so if you would, as you either listen to us today or talk to people later or peruse the report, think about what would add value for you and what doesn't add value in those things that you would see every year that would help inform decisions. So now we are going to move into a presentation, an overview of what's in the report and how to read it. The slides, some of the slides came directly from the work of our graphic designer. They're a little blurry when they got blown up to that size, but the whole report, for any of you, but certainly for people listening, is available on our website. And with that, I would love to turn it over to Matt for a little bit.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and walk you through the structure of the report really quickly and then answer any questions you may have about it. So the report looks at various housing and household and population indicators at both a citywide level and in 24 neighborhood areas that you see on the slide in front of you. The neighborhood areas were determined in partnership with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and they generally correspond to the neighborhood areas in the Portland Plan. The report blends historic data on households and the housing stock along with some current market data on housing production, affordability, and the rental and ownership markets. The data is derived from a number of sources, the Federal Census Bureau, Multnomah County, Metro, the city of Portland, some private market sources as well. One thing we do want to make sure we note is that a lot of these data sources do undercount some of our most vulnerable communities as well as communities of color in Portland and it's widely acknowledged that a lot of these data sources do. But in order to allow for us to produce an annual report that can be constantly informing and gaining value throughout the years, we thought it important to acknowledge it and try and address those shortcomings, but to use the sources that are available to us because the Bureau doesn't source data itself. The report is divided into five sections and so we've got the first part, or five parts. The first part is a narrative overview and some contextual information on the data sources as well as our process. The second piece is a citywide analysis, looking at, again, demographic data, the housing stock, as well as affordability across the city. Part three presents a neighborhood profile data summary for each of the 24 neighborhoods, looking at the same kind of information that's in the citywide analysis where it is available. One piece I'd want to note, are there some areas where you see blanks in data, particularly in the demographic section? We reported everything within 95% confidence level and when you start to get to some of the sub-geographies, some of the data we didn't want to publish because we weren't confident in yet. Part four, as Tracy mentioned, presents information on the historic reporting, the programming and direct expenditure of the city of Portland on homelessness and housing programming, and then part five comments on the methodology. So at a citywide and a neighborhood level, the first section of analysis is really looking at the demographic data. And the indicators and source data we looked at are the same as the city economist, Josh Harwood, particularly in the report, the Portland Perspective, 50-city comparison. And as one would expect, we see similar trends in our household profiles, our income profiles, our population changes over the last 15 years. The report then moves into the housing stock and production, where we present a series of data on single-family and multifamily housing units, permitting data as well as regulated unit from the Metro inventory from 2000 up until 2014. And then finally, the report moves into our couple of larger sections, which are the affordability estimates for home ownership and rental ownership. And the affordability estimates have been assessed for the average Portland household as well as a variety of household types in Portland to demonstrate how affordability varies by race and ethnicity, income, and household composition. And so one of the things we'd like to take a moment to do for council as well as members of the public that are watching is, because the affordability estimates are such a large piece of the report, is to walk through how to read and interpret the affordability estimates. And so if you're looking at page 28 in the report or on the slide in front of you, the slide presents kind of the top half of the page in the report. What you see there is first, it's the household profile that we're using as an example. In this case, it's a three-person low-income household, so a household that earns 60% of the median family income. And you've got two components to the top half of the rental affordability estimate. On the right-hand side, you see the median income for that particular household type as well as what would be considered the maximum monthly housing cost that's affordable, so up to 30% of that particular household's income. And on the left, we've mapped the 24 neighborhood areas and highlighted in blue the neighborhoods that are considered affordable for a two-bedroom rental unit. On the lower half of the page and the next slide in the presentation, what you see is each of the 24 neighborhoods and you see quarter-one data from 2015, so as of March of 2015, what the median rents were and vacancy rates for each unit type, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, for each of the neighborhoods. And we went in and assessed which one of these median rents in quarter-one would be considered affordable for this particular household typology. And those in green are considered affordable and those in red are considered not affordable, where the household, if they were to rent at the average market rate, would be paying more than 30%. Moving on to a sample of our ownership affordability profile, I would turn your attention to, in the report, page 51. And what you have, again, it's a very similar structure. In this case, we're using the average single-mother household in Portland. And again, on the right-hand side, on the top there, you see that the median income for the average single-mother household is $33,772 and thus the maximum monthly housing would be $844. Again, you see a map of where ownership would be considered affordable in the city. In this case, again, highlighted in blue, there are two neighborhoods where that would be considered affordable. In the table, what you see, again, similar to the rental affordability profiles, are each of the 24 neighborhoods paired with the 2014 median home sales price in that neighborhood and then what the monthly homeownership cost, estimate of what the monthly homeownership cost would be for that particular median home sales price. And then on the far right, again, an indication of whether or not that would be considered affordable by the 30% standard in the different neighborhoods.
Okay, I'm going to walk you through a couple of, just an introduction to what we think the overall, the report is telling us, and then we'll go through some key findings. So I mean, really in short, the findings put hard data behind what we, I think, all think we've intuitively observed and understand about the current state of housing in Portland. Certainly, as we would have predicted, it shows that there is currently nowhere in the city that's affordable to an extremely low-income household, those that we define as one making 30% or less of our area median income. And I apologize to people at home, but if you go to the report, starting on page 26, you can actually quickly flip through the average households and what they can afford and just looking at these maps is very instructive. And what you see is that for nearly everyone, if you're making a median income, the central city is unaffordable. For communities of color, seniors, and households headed by single mothers, few neighborhoods anywhere are affordable. Some people are already being pushed out of the city altogether. Of course, our analysis currently stops at the city line. One thing that's quite clear from decades of research is that the segregation of households by poverty really has terrible outcomes for families. But every neighborhood is different and every household is different. The good news is that Portland long ago realized the great value to all of our families in complete neighborhoods, which provide opportunity for quality of life as well as for prosperity and that we in Portland aren't giving up on a city that can include everyone and where all of our neighborhoods are vibrant and prosperous. So with that introduction, Matt's going to walk So with that introduction, Matt's going to walk us through some of the key findings, and then turn it back to me to wrap up.
So, as Commissioner Saltzman acknowledged, this is a fairly dense report. But we did want to pull out some key findings that we thought would be nice to highlight during the presentation, but also encourage that there are a lot more findings in there as folks have time to read through. The first one we wanted to comment on is the multifamily permitting and production in the city. Increasingly, as folks would probably guess, the permitting is multifamily in the city, and in pretty close alignment with what the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability has been planning for in a lot of our corridors and within the central city. In 2014, production still had not yet reached pre-recessionary levels, and we measured production by active housing units on the market. But permitting, for the first time, far exceeded in 2014 the pre-recessionary levels, and anticipating that those moved to production, including those under construction right now. 2015 may see more multifamily units come online than we've seen before. Production continues to be concentrated in the central city, but also northwest, the Interstate Corridor, Belmont-Hawthorne Division, and the St. John's Neighborhood. Moving to income, broadly across the board, we saw that housing, we know housing affordability is as much of an income issue as a housing cost issue. Martha, can you? And we did see dips across the board in the median income. When you look at it by race, ethnicity, for Portland, the Portland population, what we are seeing in our 2013 one-year estimates is we're starting to see those median incomes kind of tick back up. But unfortunately, the trend doesn't seem to correspond to our communities of color, who are seeing their inflation-adjusted incomes continue to fall. And this obviously exacerbates the issue on housing affordability for communities of color, as well as those households, such as seniors, that find themselves on fixed incomes. If you look at some trends in diversity in the city, what we see is that generally, the city's racial composition is slowly changing, but not substantially, over the last 10 years. But the migration and settlement within the city has dramatically changed. And so the chart you see in front of you demonstrates the change in diversity in terms of the overall percentage of communities of color in each neighborhood over the last 14 years, since the year 2000. And as you can see, and this speaks to the North and Northeast Housing Initiative presentation that you all saw in January, communities of color are moving out of the MLK Alberta and Interstate Corridor area, and increasingly moving to neighborhoods on the outer edge of the city. So overall, this, this report, and Tracy mentioned this as well, but when you think of this in the context of housing choice, again, households such as single mothers, households from communities of color, and households of seniors continually are struggling with respect to housing choice, particularly when it comes to the central city. There are very few rental units and ownership units available for these households. And for those that choose to live closer toward the central city, they're often paying far above 30% of their incomes in rent.
Okay, and then wrapping it up, we want to talk a bit about the historic policy, some of the reports over time that we've taken a look at. So this is Central City No-Net Loss, initially passed by council in 2001. The City of Portland will maintain no less than 8,286 rental housing units affordable to households who earn 0% to 60% of the median family income. The city is currently not meeting the Central City No-Net Loss goal. As of March, there was a total of 6,818 units affordable at 60% and below. 96% of those units were regulated units, meaning they had some form of public subsidy that kept their rents affordable. Only 267 units that were affordable at 60% and below were free-market, market rate, private-market, unregulated units. So over time, in the central city, while the number of regulated affordable units continues to increase, the central city itself has seen a continued loss of affordability, primarily in the private market units. We've also included in the report the most recent set-aside report, which is one of the other big countings that we do for you. It's through the end of fiscal year 2013-14. It shows that we are meeting the adopted policy goal of an aggregate citywide minimum of 30% of tax increment financing dedicated to affordable housing. We talk a bit about that on page 85 of your report. Thank you, and now he's pointing out to me that I've lost by the end of my talking points. And so what we, talking about regulated units is one of the primary ways that we, as a city, impact the affordability of our housing market. This is a map of all of the regulated units in the city. So what we learn is that investing in housing affordability works. Between 2000 and 2011, the number of regulated affordable housing units in Portland ballooned from 12,800 in 2000 to nearly 20,000 today. And of those regulated units, 65% were funded, at least in part, by the City of Portland. So preserving the city's investment in our affordable housing infrastructure is a cost-effective and vital intervention. The city currently regulates, through the Portland Housing Bureau, over 12,000 units that we have invested in to keep their rents affordable for our citizens. The Bureau currently prioritizes our preservation work, but, I mean, of course, that stock is aging. And so in upcoming reports, the Bureau is going to share more details with council about your affordable housing infrastructure. So the way, a couple more pieces of information, the way that the city's investment in the preservation and creation of affordable housing is funded is two primary ways. I talk about this during the budget hearing every year. So the first is the federal funding. This chart shows funding over the past little over 10 years. This is all from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a variety of kinds of affordable housing investments. Community Development Block Grant has dropped quite a bit over time, although it's stabilizing. Our next most robust form of subsidy, the Home Grant, has also been dropping, and right now has a little less favor in Congress, so we don't, we're not as optimistic about that. And then a couple more specialized sources, housing opportunities for people with AIDS, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is directed specifically for homeless interventions. You three probably know more about the prospects that we have in Congress than I do, so we'll leave it at that. And then finally, tax increment financing, you know, the reason that we have been able to maintain a lot of the regulated units in the central city. So this chart is a bit psychedelic, but it does a good job of showing what we used to call the TIF cliff, and is, but was re-dubbed by our financial analyst as sort of a slow slide. The current years always show this big bubble because we have this, this is current development, so you've got two and three years' worth of money going out the door for, you can see the big blip in the River District is the Abigail. It's currently under construction. Convention Center is Miracle Central. So you can see sort of the larger bubbles in the interstate investments. A peak in 2021, you'll know, is Parcel III in North McHaddam. But in general, this represents what you'd see in the Portland Development Commission's forecast of the tax increment financing and the set-aside.
Let me make sure I understand that chart. That is projected spending, not, not available funds?
That is projected available funds, specific to the set-aside.
Okay.
Funds available for the development of affordable housing as currently projected, both by PDC and PHB.
Okay.
So it includes recent decisions by council. As you see various districts tail off, that's generally just the end of the district, although a lot of times, we have, you know, downtown waterfront ended a number of years ago. We had a recent loan come back in, so we've actually got a little pot of money there, even though that district is closed. We can continue to spend the proceeds specifically for affordable housing in that urban renewal area. So that's an oversight of a dense report. You know, the next steps, we've talked about this next phase coming up in October, and so we really want to spend some time with you, with your staffs, stakeholders, many of whom are in this room, to learn what has value. I have no desire to leave to these people a 200-page report that nobody will read. So, so really thinking about what you want to know, and we'll try to figure out if we can get data good enough to tell you. And so with that, I think we're open for any questions you might have.
Tracy, let me jump in, and I'm, I'm sorry there's just three of us today because this is, this is a milestone, this report, and it's, it is a treasure trove. And so your intent is to do a follow-up with our offices to get some specific feedback about other kinds of data sets, comparators, and at least just put that on your, you know, put that out there and get a response from the Bureau.
Absolutely.
So I look forward to doing that because I think you've, you've started at a very high level in terms of the data and the clarity of the presentation. Then we can have a discussion about what else is useful. Let's, I had a few little comments that I wanted to share with you today, and we'll follow up. And I'd start on page 94. Actually, let's go to the reports generally, because I think they're really helpful. And that starts at page 84. The, the, the no-net-loss policy and tracking it in the aggregate, the one thing that gets maybe lost in that is, year to year, what units have been preserved and, and replaced against the tidal wave of market forces that are, that are putting pressure on other regulated units. So I, I would, I would urge you to at least think about also including a chart about any activity that went against the tide. Because the net, we understand the market forces, but there still might be activity within the district that is consistent with a no-net, a preservation or a new unit. As to the policy, could you remind us, does the replacement have to be within the district?
It has to be within the central city, as the policy stands. It's only tracking units within the central city. One of the things I think that's valuable for council to consider is whether this specific way of tracking affordability is the most useful. With this data set, we've got a lot greater ability to track a lot more specifically than we did before. I mean, until this year, we are hand-counting these units and then trying to extrapolate a little bit. So I think it's worth considering questions like, you know, sort of where does the replacement occur? What do you want to track? And I think we'll talk to our stakeholders and make some recommendations as well.
And do we think the policy needs to be updated somehow to stay faithful to the goal, but maybe give us more flexibility? That's a question. On, on page 85, one thing I would suggest in a number of these areas is that, at least in the first couple of reports, you tell the story as expansively as possible to set the frame. So for example, we often get people coming to council saying, oh, any given year, you're below 30%, you failed. And of course, the policy is, over five years, 30%, and it's, you know, it's in the, it's in the aggregate and balanced. And I would, I would encourage us to put that in the key, so that people don't just look at one year and say, oh my God, we failed, because of course, development doesn't happen that way, and, and we get judged on the basis of five years of performance.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And again, on methodology, on page 95, you almost need a PhD to understand the timing issues for the asset portfolio production. And I think that's one that, that might even benefit from a footnote and a next, and a description.
We're just going to redo that one.
It's a dynamite document, and it's an important document, but unless you understand all the timing issues of when you credit it, a unit, like the closing of a tax credit program, which could happen actually after the opening, and blah, blah, blah.
Have the backup for you.
Yeah, it's very, it's very, it's very hard. So I think that's another example of where more information, so that people don't just draw assumptions from this, because there's a ton of stuff in the pipeline, it's going to hit a certain year, but then you're likely to say, average it out. And averaging it out is a more accurate reflection of production, so I offer that. If we could turn to page 20 for a second. Just, it may just be me, but because my eyesight is faltering, I love pie charts. And I, and these are important, I mean, these are great, but 2.2.2 is a, is a really important piece of data. It's almost our baseline. It's the total units. You're showing us, and just for people like me, a pie chart sometimes works better than this dense forest of data. And it also, sometimes, if it's color-coded, it allows you to compare year to year in a way that's very visual. So that might just be the, the Nick Fish, Commissioner Nick Fish appeal because of his eyesight. I had a question. This tells, this, this contains a treasure trove of data for policymakers, and then has really important information about reporting. Do you foresee a time in the evolution of this where you, where there's some companion data about what our key partners are doing to tell the broader story? So for example, reset, and all the great work that's happening between the county, the city, and Home4it. Do you foresee a time when there's a consolidated balance sheet and a consolidated snapshot of production that shows what, what, what those three jurisdictions are doing together?
Yeah, I think to some degree, that would certainly add value. You know, we don't sort of want it to be a kitchen sink report, but I think one of the things that we wanted to do, and frankly, just ran out of time, was to figure out a way that added value, that specifically tagged a home for everyone into, you know, where does that effort fit here? I think that's just, makes sense to most people.
Two, two other minor things. In page 96, in the, on the homelessness expenditures, just a quick primer, what is the difference between direct and indirect expenditures? Is there a, is there a simple dividing line between a direct or an indirect expenditure?
Yeah, I mean, usually, direct services are actually going directly to the programs, and the indirect is what it takes to get the program on the street, the money out the door, that sort of thing.
Okay. And then finally, given that you have all this tremendous data by geographic area, is there a way to include opportunity mapping in this report?
Sure.
There's so many of our policies are geared towards privileging opportunity. I just think it's an interesting overlay to look at the snapshot by district, and also to have a current opportunity analysis, so we can, we can sort of overlay both and get a sense about whether the housing is going in the areas of highest opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think also areas of gentrification.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions for the team? I have some, some further requests, but I might just save them for later. Well, maybe we'll put them on the table now. I think.
Sure, yeah. Matthew's taking notes, so.
Report's great. There's no danger in our office that it will go unread because it's already all marked up with highlighters and stickies, so.
You can have another one. We have more.
Doesn't have to be pretty. But I guess some specific requests for follow-up. In my case, you know, we, we've spent about $100 million in TIF in the last four years on housing, which is more than the governor's proposing, investing in the whole state, which I'm happy about for us, and maybe causes the governor to want to up the game. We're proposing, as your chart shows, to spend about $50 million this year in 1516. We've just focused our urban renewal area down to nine urban renewal areas, so we can focus even better. So I really have three requests there. I'd like to see a narrative of what you expect the role of housing to be, you know, strategically, not just numerically, but what do we expect the role of housing to be in each of those urban renewal areas? What's the proposed activity for the year, or how are we doing with respect to that? And then what other plans and strategies elsewhere, not just in the Housing Bureau, what other plans and strategies have to work or need detention in order for that strategy to work? What does PDC need to be doing? What does the Planning Bureau need to be doing? What does VES and Transportation need to be doing? You know, pave streets where we've got dirt roads, and it's pretty hard to develop the housing that's in the plant. So I'd like to hear from not just you, but you, you as a Bureau in particular. So we've got this housing strategy for each urban renewal area. The Housing Bureau has its resources and its responsibilities. It has its partners, but what do other people need to do in either city? need to do in either city bureaus or elsewhere in order to make that strategy actually happen? Or better yet, outperform our goal? If we did this, we could really do great things. I mean, for one thing, I really appreciate, Tracy, that you've said, you know, we're able to build housing-only projects on main streets, but we're not going to do that. We're going to build mixed-use projects, because those projects should have ground-floor retail in order to have a lively streetscape, not just more units. Thank you, that's the right approach. We should be thinking like one organization, even if we have multiple bureaus. Well, you obviously need some help in order to get those, those commercial spaces built and managed and, you know, economically successful. So, you get the point. But I'd like to see, here's the capsule summary for the Gateway District, here's what our partners really need to do, and here's what the results should be if all that orchestration comes together. And then, obviously, then, what does that mean in terms of TIF expenditure in each of those districts? That's sort of the part you already have. But as the guy who spends the most time here with PDC, I'd really like to have that view of what they need to do to be your effective partner as an organization, you know, for this year and the next five years.
That's great, thank you. I think that's something--
Tracy, I'm going to, Dan and I are going to move a budget note to give you additional resources.
Just to meet that request.
This has now been transformed to the City of Portland Opportunity Housing Jobs and Transportation.
No, we're trying not to duplicate Josh's report, although one of the, I appreciate that note as well, because I think one of the things that we wanted to emphasize in our presentation was just the couple of places that we've sort of started to tag, you know, we want alignment with Josh's report, we want certainly a lot of alignment with the Bureau of Planning, and I think, as you point out, Mayor, obviously very clear alignment with PDC, and I think if, that would be my sort of heart's desire, is that in that next, each report, that is something we can improve on, is that alignment with the other bureaus.
Tracy, can I add three more things?
Absolutely. So far, I mean, you know, you've still got another couple of shots at us.
You know, most people who come here give us reports, and they're not read as carefully, so it's a compliment to your team. So, page 94, on the tax exemption, you do a separate report on tax exemption every year.
Yes.
And took over that from PDC, and really, it's a terrific report. Included in that report is forgone revenue and the accountability piece, the folks that have lost their exemption because they no longer qualify. I would just say, consider whether that's useful addition to this, both the forgone revenue, so that the reader knows what is the value proposition, and the accountability piece, the number of units in any given year that are disqualified, because you're actually scrubbing the numbers to make sure they qualify.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea, we should get that report as part of this.
But you already gave us that report, so I was just--
Yeah.
Number two, I'm constantly amazed at how much debate there is in our community about definitions. And I'm not alluding to one person who sends out an email on a daily basis, but more generally to, what are the most, what's the, what are the terms that we use? What do they mean? And I, because this is such a valuable education tool, I would urge you to consider a definitions page early on.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
To just in plain English, tell your story, so that people then, as they read it, know what we mean by affordable housing, or tax increment finance, or whatever. Regulated unit, just the basic information.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Because I think this is going to have an amazing, a tremendous impact on raising public awareness and understanding. And then finally, I hesitate to open up this scab, but there's another equity piece that we don't really get to here, which is the region. We're half the population of the region and two-thirds of the affordable housing, and that's not sustainable. And at least, I would ask you to put on the table the question about whether we should track that annually, because at some point, we have to broaden this conversation beyond what Portland and Multnomah do. And we have to, we have to stop saying that the regional strategy is handing out the Street Roots Guide to people that are on the street and saying, get on the Macs and go downtown. There has to be investment regionally, and I know HUD agrees with that, but we haven't had a systematic planning process to get at the heart of that. And perhaps that's a page that's worth tracking.
Yeah, no, I, there's a couple of times where either matter I mentioned that we suspect one of the things that's happening is people are sort of, people in poverty are sort of falling off the map at the end of, the eastern end of Portland city limits, and so we've done, we can't get this level of detail countywide, but we can get, you know, the things that you find or add value, so we're not guessing, and we can actually see some of those indicators.
Yeah, that's, I want to second that. That's exacerbated by what the employment trends are and what the housing production trends are, both of which used to be heavily skewed towards the suburbs and now heavily skewed towards the city. So, we've got to have that understanding of, and progress in what the region does about this, because we simply, no matter what we do, we don't have enough money to solve the region's problem. It remains to be seen whether we're going to be able to solve our own, but we certainly don't have enough money to solve the region's problem. So, that's a big deal.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I would urge that future reports track, at least to the extent that we're able, as you pointed out, we don't have the same level of data, but track our situation and what the region's doing and what we're doing, because the knowledge is the first step in that discussion.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, other--
We have Sheila Martin from the Institute, PSU's Institute of Metfalten Studies here today, who can probably help us on that.
Speaking of tracking the region.
Yeah, tracking the region, she can help on that, too.
Okay.
So, that completes the presentation. I don't know if we have people signed up.
I think we probably do.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, like I said, we have some great community partners here today, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see who we have signed up to speak.
We have two people signed up, Kat Gogonauer and Stephen J. Entwistle.
And anyone who hasn't signed up is welcome to join.
Sheila, are you planning to speak?
She's planning to be available, which is why she's here. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council and mayor. My name is Kat Gogonauer, I'm now the newly-appointed Housing Chair for the NAACP, and I've been before you before, so, you know, I'm a very active housing advocate in, for north and northeast Portland. I'm a native-born Oregonian, and I did want to say, I'm from a very rural part of the state, and so I've only been a part of the Portland community since 2002. Moved into Alberta and Maryland Street at that time, right before the light rail came in. And so, a lot of this issue is very close to my heart, because my family first had a chance to buy a house on Alberta, Maryland, my youngest brother did. And I hadn't planned to kind of tell some of the lived experience, but I do think there's some importance to kind of understanding what we're dealing with in my area specifically. And his house was foreclosed on in 2010, and my mom and I were made homeless. I had gone to London to study a master's and moved back in 2012, which is when I kind of came onto your radar, as we were looking for houses. So, housing and jobs, you know, the kind of idea that an education will help you to pull yourself up and to stabilize your family are very out of reach. I appreciate this report. As I've said before, I also very much appreciate the work of Portland Housing Bureau in leading this data. It's very important, I understand, to have data-driven responses to social problems, and, you know, I do a lot of equity work. I really wanted to appreciate you flagging up the regional issue. I've just completed a 14-month process with Metro, working on their Equity Baseline Framework Report, and housing equity, transportation equity, these are all, you know, interlinked issues. And so, we were very much able to show through a social determinants of health, public health lens restorative justice approach, how the cost burden, you know, of 30 percent of income for housing is important, but when you add transportation to that, when you add utilities to that, you know, just the general daily maintenance costs, people are, you know, obviously going deeply into debt, if they're able to maintain any kind of housing. I currently live in housing through PCRI, the Portland Community Reinvestment Initiative. I was able to find that data through the state of Oregon, they're a subsidized low-income housing provider. And so, I'm very thankful, I know, you know, they came by their housing stock in a very different way, and so, it would be great to have more of these CDCs in north, northeast Portland, specifically providing housing for us. There's a lot of talk, I work at Self-Enhancement Incorporated, I am the Assistant to the President of the company, and, you know, we serve primarily African-American clients, and our job has been made much harder. A significant proportion of our people have been moved out. I think that some of the data I found was kind of striking with PHB's community engagement process, right? We've never been a very significant proportion of the population in Oregon, but if the demographics in Alberta-Albina have gone from 31 percent to 15 percent, we do have a population that's highly impacted. So, I think with what we know with this data, the kind of coordination with Metro, we have an opportunity to act. This sounds an alarm for some of our most vulnerable community members. We need to couple affordability with opportunity, as was said, and make sure people have a right to return to areas of higher opportunity, as well as developing areas we've been pushed out to.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Mayor, council members, my name is Stephen Entwistle, lifelong resident in Portland, member of Individuals for Justice, and Executive Director of Oregon Healing Man Sanctuary. I hear the sentiments here, I'm just surprised that we don't have a packed room, okay? This is a real important issue, and it just really surprised, but, you know, when you have meetings at 3:00 in the afternoon, you know, it's hard to get people that are locked into the workday culture to come down and testify. I would suggest maybe getting a little more advertisement out there on these issues, because these are important. That being said, I am also a survivor of foreclosure, having a house in northeast Portland. And I know what that is like to go through, okay? And that's not fun, okay? Most people don't even survive that issue, okay? And this is going on all the time. Gentrification, it just rolls off lips like it's nothing. You know what gentrification is? It's violent displacement. That's what gentrification is. You're displaced in a violent way. The sheriff will come down and drag you out of the house, okay? You might be late on a couple of rents, you know, a couple of payments. Now, what's going on in San Francisco, as I speak, right now? Hunter's Point in the Mission District, okay? I don't know if you guys know what's going on there, but I would suggest, and the people in TV land, to take a look at that and to ask themselves in a serious manner if this is what they want here for Portland. You have a lot of gentrification to do. If you want to make you guys' rents and your owners happy, okay, you're going to have to gentrify a whole bunch of people and bring in, recruit a whole bunch of people with money, okay? I mean, that's what they did down in San Francisco, didn't they? Yeah. So, anyway, we need, as a people, we need a rights-based local law-making, okay? And we need to get rid of, we need to get around the Dillon's Rule, okay? And we need to use eminent domain as a public, as a community, not as a government, but as a community, to get rid of some of these crony landlords and so forth, okay? I'm serious about this, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my name is Lightning, I represent Lightning Watchdog X, and also Lightning Housing X. On this data, this report, it's very impressive. I'm going to probably read it five times, if not 10 times over. Absolutely amazing. Now, one of the things, I guess, when I try to look at the overall picture is the shortage of people at 30 percent MFI or below. I try to look close at the people out on the streets, the people that I think need the housing the most, that the market is missing. I believe that the private developers are doing an outstanding job of 60 percent MFI and above. We're missing that market 30 percent and below. We need a catch-up phase. We keep talking, a number of 2,500 people currently out on the streets, we need to hit that number somehow, some way. I still want some thought put on that United States Post Office site in the Pearl District for housing 30 percent and below. It's 13 acres. We need to have a catch-up phase. You're still implementing other plans, they're working. We need to have a thousand-plus people on the streets that'll rotate and not end up becoming chronic homelessness. There needs to be a fine line built into that to hit that right number that's going to rotate. We need to still focus on the tourism dollars, the benefits of having people off the streets into housing, the benefits to the businesses on improved income. The total amount of dollars by having them into housing will be in the millions, if not the hundreds of millions plus, by the business revenue, tourism revenue, and the amount of money we have to pay on their health and other expenses. We need to look at the overall production of units currently out there, we need to start utilizing that space more efficiently. If somebody has a subsidized unit that they've had for years and they're not paying rent, would they consider taking someone that they might know off the street into that unit with them at a low cost of, say, $250? What we're doing is we're doubling up certain spaces and utilizing that, and we're also dropping the cost down extensively to get the people off the sidewalks into housing. The cost savings can be tremendous by looking at that, but we all know that we need to develop more units. More units are necessary, but we, and the private sector is doing an outstanding job of picking up the remaining units at 60 percent and above, but that 30 percent and below is the main focus, and that is the people out on the streets, that is the people in the doorways, that is the people who are lucky to be able to carry a sleeping bag with them. Those are the most vulnerable that need those housing units built. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Anyone else?
We have one more person, yes.
Yep, come on up, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. My name is John Miller, I'm Executive Director of Oregon Opportunity Network, also a lifelong resident of Portland, and certainly seeing lots of changes in Portland. I've known through my work and also just from living in different parts of the city, sort of anecdotally, the changes. What's great about this report is it actually puts numbers to what I've known for a really long time. I feel like this is an extremely valuable report, and I think PHB has done a great job at putting this together. It really highlights a lot of the areas where we've done well, and also a lot of the areas where we've got a lot of work to do. One of the things that I wanted to talk a little bit about is some of the areas of note, as I read through the report, that really stood out. First of all, it does show to me that there's a fairly adequate amount of workforce housing within the city. There's certainly, when you look at at least the average income and the housing supply other than in the central city, there seems to be enough housing throughout the city for the median income folks. Where you run into trouble is the folks, when you get below 60 percent especially, there seems to be a great lack of housing. It also shows that poverty has definitely moved east, and that was one of the most remarkable things that I noted, of how drastic the poverty has shifted out east. Some of the points of alarm, it shows that black families and Native American families are priced out of almost every neighborhood in the city, no matter what. They really only have two or three areas that they can reasonably afford. It also shows that our matches, our resources really don't match where we need to make investments. So, we've got TIF and other things, and those are in certain areas that we actually need to make investments in more areas than just TIF areas in order to make this really an effective, a city that everyone can live in. And as a member of the Fair Housing Advisory Committee, I did see a pretty big concern in that, just in looking at this, it does look like we're not doing a very good job of affirmatively furthering fair housing. And when you look at the ways of the investment, or where people can have access to live, and the monies we're getting from the federal government, I guess, just, I'm just concerned that we might, some of the federal funds that we have might be at stake if we don't take some pretty quick action to resolve those things. We also need to look at policies to create more resources, and also to build more housing, but also we need to be looking at policies to raise income. I think that's, there's two ways to solve the problem, you can bring up income, or you can lower prices, and I think we need to be, really making a concerted effort at doing both. And I think we need to be, really making a concerted effort at doing both. Clearly, the private market is not meeting the need, and so definitely applaud Commissioner Saltzman and his efforts around incentive zoning. We also look forward to overturning the inclusionary zoning at the state level coming right up. On the resource side, right after this, I'm going across the river to the Welcome Home Kickoff, and that is an effort to bring in significant resources to help with this effort, to make a lot of those red lines that we see in here, the red percentages turn to green through more resources. So that's, I guess I would find, in closing, say that I'm looking forward to working with PHB over the next several months as we move on to Phase Two of this report, and I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Thanks.
Hello. Good afternoon. Diane Lin, Director at Pride Ground. And by the way, the cover of this report is a Pride Ground family, a success story, beautiful family. And I just want to add just a moment or two additional comments to John, and he said a lot of what many of us feel about the critical importance of this kind of data to drive really good and thoughtful decision-making and policy work. And of course, as you three know, more than, better than anyone else in the city, we've got to be really creative, innovative, aggressive at what to do around the fact that the city we love so much, and there's a lot of us natives here today, needs to be affordable to groups of people. And remember, the neighborhood grouping that you're looking at is a little different than where a lot of us are used to, and we have to remind people that those are broader neighborhood groups than we're used to looking at, and that median income means that there are a lot of people below that, a lot of people above that, so there's iterations of the impact around that. I think your points about the regional look is also critical, and actually statewide, because we're finding that in the discussions at the state around inclusionary zoning, that workforce housing and lack of inventory is pervasive statewide. So this is really becoming really a crisis on the state level. So we want to, again, I'd like to personally thank Tracy Manning for her extraordinary work and the team for creating really important data that I think all of us are anxious to work with the city on figuring out solutions. And a quick final thought, Partners for Affordable Home Ownership is working very hard to partner with the city to come up with, again, ways that we can all work together more efficiently, effectively, to create more opportunities on the homeownership end of the housing continuum. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you both. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all very much, so it's time for a motion.
Mayor, I would like to accept the report.
Okay. Further discussion, then roll call on that, please.
Fish?
I want to begin by thanking Tracy for her service to the city. When former Director Margaret Van Vliet was poached by the governor to take over the state agency, the city and my team thought about doing a national search, but when we talked to some of our key stakeholders, we quickly learned that the best candidate was actually in our own backyard, and Tracy graciously accepted the offer to come work for the city, and she has provided exemplary leadership. And I know we could spend a long time highlighting her accomplishments, but the one I'll just note for the record is that she has built and motivated a great team at the Bureau, and it's reflected in the people that are here and the people that aren't here, and that may be her best legacy, the team building she did at the Bureau and the excellence that has become the norm. So Tracy, you'll be greatly missed, and thank you for your service. Commissioner Saltzman, as the Housing Commissioner, you've made transparency and accountability a hallmark, and you have been focused on making sure we have good data, and that helps us make wiser decisions. So thank you for your passion for this exercise and this report, which I think is gonna be very helpful to us as we make decisions going forward. And then finally, what this report tells us is that if you are formerly homeless, working class, lower middle class, you can't afford to live in the city. And that's not the city that we want. And that has cascading effects, including eroding the base of our public schools, creating divisions, and ultimately, as Dan often says, leading us down the path to some cities that we don't want to emulate, cities of just rich and poor. We know the federal government is not gonna be part of the solution anytime soon, and your graph about the declining federal resources is sobering. In fact, I understand that most of the candidates running for president on the Republican Party have suggested just abolishing HUD, so we're not, depending on the outcome of that election, it may not get better. We know that through that chart you showed us, that there's not so much a TIF cliff, but a steady decline of tax increment finance resources. They have been spent well, but they're not an infinite resource. So if the federal government doesn't step up, and if the 30 percent set aside continues to shrink, we have to do something. And that may be a dedicated revenue source going forward. In the short term, it seems to me we should invest our surplus in helping people survive. And I am proud to join, what I hope is, all of my colleagues in supporting Commissioner Saltzman's budget asks, which include $5 million for the HIF Housing Investment Fund, which would hopefully be matched by the county, and which would give us a local dollars with fewer strings to use to innovate, and particularly to see if we can bring the cost of housing down and get more units. Because this report tells one clear story, and that is, we have to build more units. There is no other alternative. We must build more supply to house more people. Thank you to everyone who worked on this outstanding report. Again, Tracy, you'll be deeply missed, and Dan, thank you for your leadership. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I'd like to acknowledge Director Manning once again for her foresight in creating this report and the hard work of all the staff at the Portland Housing Bureau, who contributed, especially Matthew Antoinette Pietka and Martha Calhoun, Shannon Callahan from my office, Javier Nena, the Assistant Director. And I think, as Commissioner Fish just said, I think one legacy Tracy leaves is she has created a great cohesive, very committed to the mission of the Housing Bureau. And it's, you know, it's not every day you find a bureau where the, sort of, everybody is pulling in the same direction. And it helps that it's a small bureau, but it's also highly motivated and highly qualified people working there. This report provides a pretty clear picture of the need to increase the affordable housing stock throughout the city, and also recognizes that our main source of affordable housing funding right now, urban renewal or tax increment funding, is nearing the end of its useful life. And we are, it's incumbent upon us to make the most of these remaining funds, but we also must prepare for new funding mechanisms to replace this resource. And to this end, we will make a multi-pronged approach. I hope to have a robust incentive zoning proposal before the council next month in May, which I believe can serve as one piece of the necessary funding pie, and should provide us with a resource to tackle, in particular, meeting our central city no net loss policy goals. But we also need to look for other stable, long-term funding mechanisms. I know the Welcome Home Coalition is looking at options for perhaps voter-approved funding mechanisms. Some of the things I'm also interested in looking at include a possible housing impact fee or housing linkage fee, pretty much the same thing. And those things we will be looking at as well. So as Portland continues to grow, I'm committed to making sure that everyone in every neighborhood shares in the prosperity Portland is enjoying at this moment. I think, you know, you turn on the TV tonight, last night, and you see Baltimore. And I think one of the things I think about, having lived on the East Coast for quite a while, and what really appeals to me about a city like Portland is even though we have our problems, I think people still have a feeling that they can make a difference and a feeling that there's opportunity and upward mobility. You look at a big city like Baltimore and some of the entrenched problems, and you realize, many people feel that they are, they have lost out on any chance of upward mobility and prosperity, and that fuels the fires, literally. So I think that that's one great thing about Portland, is I don't think we've lost, we've lost it yet, but we need to keep ever vigilant to make sure that we can provide opportunities for all Portlanders to own a home or live in a good neighborhood and, or live in a good rental, good rental stock housing. And those are things I'm pledged to do to my best, to my physical ability. Aye.
Hales?
Well, thank you, Tracy, for your service to this city and to this cause, and we wish you well on your next venture. We also want to thank your Bureau for doing great work with you and on this report, and much more to come, and all the partners that are here in the room that care about this issue and work so hard on it as volunteers, as managers of nonprofits, as people that work literally to build this necessity for our fellow citizens. Couple of thoughts. One, you know, there's some real success in here in addition to the challenge, and we've talked a lot about the challenge, and I will too, but we've absorbed a lot of households in the central city and gateway in the time period that this focuses on between 2000 and 2013, and that was what we wanted. And in fact, I'm sort of having a déjà vu moment. I'm back at meetings at Metro occasionally, arguing that the rest of the region should accept the reality that actually most of the residential growth is happening in the city, and most of the employment growth is happening in the city. And I was there 15 years ago, arguing that we actually could absorb a bunch of additional units in the Pearl District and downtown, and they didn't need to move the urban growth boundary out in order to provide housing opportunity. And we proved, again, you've got the numbers, that we actually could accomplish that, and quite a few of those units were affordable, not as many as maybe we would want, but quite a few. So there's a lot of success to celebrate in the work that we've all done together, and this report documents some of that. When you look at the challenges, I think, you know, I think I would describe our situation here in Portland as, you know, you have to go to a Broadway show and they'll turn one spotlight on an actor, but then they'll turn a second one on, and they're in that convergence of those two powerful beams. Well, that's kind of where Portland is. We're in the convergence of a couple of different powerful forces here. One is income inequality, which is a national problem, the failure to rebuild a middle class after the recession, the fact that we've gone from having three high-poverty census tracts in Portland in 1970 to having 11 today. That's terrible. It's also national. It's a national force that arrives here, too. That's one beam. So there are these national trends. The middle class hasn't rebuilt, incomes haven't kept up, minimum wages are stuck, and poverty has metastasized in cities all over the country. That's here, too. Second beam is local, and that is that we are a great and livable city that has water that a lot of people want to live in, and that that powerful force of growth and change is with us, like it or not, hate it or love it, want to stop it, good luck, but it's real. And so those two forces, you know, are lighting us up with, you know, a real challenge here. And I guess I want to second what my colleagues have said, but I want to amend them a little bit. Yes, we need to build more units. In order to do that, we will need new money, and I want to second that point. Whatever we do with TIF and general fund and whatever else we can scrape together around here, it's, I won't say it's a rounding error compared to the problem, but it's not anywhere near enough, and we all know that. And we have actually gone out and gotten new money for important things in this community. We need to do that for transportation. We just celebrated how we've done that for the arts. We've done it for parks and green spaces and fire stations and other things. Children's Levy is a great example. So I think there, we need to be clear about that. We need to find new public revenues for the public investment that has to be made. As the, again, as the member of this council that spends the most time with PDC, though they are a partner for us all, I want to amend our conventional wisdom that TIF is a declining resource. It's a declining resource in the current urban renewal areas. We now have headroom because the city council has amended the plans and sunsetted two urban renewal areas and put thousands of acres and $800 million of assessed value back on the tax rolls. We have the opportunity to responsibly use urban renewal where there's the next opportunity area to create a big increment of positive development, hopefully doing a better job of preserving affordability and residency for those who live there now than we have done perhaps in the past. But to quote Monty Python, urban renewal is not dead yet, and we shouldn't assume that it is. Neither should we assume that it's an ATM that we can go to anytime we want. So I just want to place that thought in the air, and we can talk about that more in the future. Again, I want to stress, as I did in my request to the Bureau and their follow-up, that we really look at what other bureaus can do and what other entities and enterprises in the city can do to synergize the strategy, given the size of that challenge, those two converging beams of change, and the relative scarcity of resources. One thing we can do is avoid doing much more harm, and that's why earlier today, the council considered and approved moving forward with ways to look at our zoning code and avoid the pernicious effect of tearing down a great $300,000 house on a perfectly good street and replacing it with a million-dollar house over and over and over, block after block after block across the city, and thereby gentrifying the single-family base that we have, really without planning to do that. That's a change we could make to more heavily regulate and mitigate that tendency in the market. We've talked a lot about demolitions. You'll be hearing more from me on that subject because I believe we should tax demolitions, and that should be proportionate to the lost value of the structure that's being demolished. If it's a house that's ruined and is never going to be restored, obviously there's not much point in taxing its demolition. But if it's neither of those things, then I think there's a good public policy argument for doing that. So there are other things we can do in policy and tax and action plans that make this set of goals and numbers more achievable. And I'm very interested in us thinking as a Board of Directors, as stewards of the whole city and the whole enterprise of all of our bureaus, about how we make those connections, as well as how we try to do more each year. But this is a really important resource. We look forward to more discussions with the staff of the Bureau and with our advisors and community partners about how to interpret this base of knowledge and get to where we want to go. Very pleased with the work. Thank you all very much. Aye. And we are adjourned.
Thank you.